They don't want, they're not looking to sell. Most of the dealers that we deal with don't sell used trucks. Used fire trucks in this area of the country are very, very limited. You'll find a few of the very rural departments are buying them, but they're also not buying ladder trucks.
Right, because they don't need them.
Well, ladder trucks, that's a real gift for them. They're looking for tankers and pumbers.
Okay. Yep. All right. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, how many times a year you think you use that truck?
Potentially, it could, at a real fire, probably about eight or nine, nine times a year. Does a truck get used? Does a truck respond to every fire call? Not everyone. And the reason is, is because when it gets out, when I get on scene or the deputy gets on scene, it's typically a one-truck call. It's when the incident becomes more serious and we need to step up the response and make sure we have it.
Do we go to other towns that use that truck?
We will go to Long Meadow, this edge of the town. They don't have one, they haven't had one since 1992. We go to Long Meadow. And then a lot of times, North Topsville goes there for their, with their ladder truck, and a majority of the town. We have, like I said, the eastern, small portion of the eastern part of the town.
So, why don't we let them get a ladder truck and have them come to our town? Because we're paying for a service out of our taxpayers.
Correct, right.
Do we get anything out of that?
We get, to be honest with you, and I've been listening to it a lot more lately, Long Meadow ambulance has been coming to town a lot, which is run by the fire department. AMR has been passing off ambulance calls to Long Meadow Fire, which is a scary thing because it's a 10-minute response from their station to the center of town here. And if somebody's on the other end of town, it's even longer. So, it's a wash. I mean, if we went down mutual aid throughout the year, I think we did a report that was in a reminder not too long ago. We pretty much equal each other out. If we go there with a call, whether we go there with an engine or we go there with a ladder truck, and they come here about the same amount of times every year. Some years it might be a little stacked one way or the other, but if you look at a five- or a 10-year average.
But we end up getting charged for that ambulance?
No. If it's a transport, the resident will get charged for it, correct. You're right, yep.
But we're not getting nothing from that?
Yeah, the fire department doesn't have anything. But that's part of our mutual aid agreement. And in a way that our department operates, most fire departments in the area can't operate without mutual aid agreements. We don't have, we don't have the 60-something guys Springfield has on duty at a time. We have, you know, during the day we have seven, and at night we have zero on the station. So, we need to, and same thing with them, same thing with Wilberham, Hand, and Summers, you know, all the surrounding departments.
A topic that you can think about for another meeting, since you brought it up inadvertently, is why is AMR passing off all the calls to Long Meadow ambulances? Because obviously, that's something we want to address with them if we've got a contract with them and they're not fulfilling their contract, so.
Yeah, I can look into it.
Like I said, it's not a topic for today.
Right, I understand.
If you could.
Yeah, it is scary.
About how much, how many would you say is?
I don't have the exact number. I think the.
I've seen it a few times, actually.
We see it more often because we are right across the street from Corey Hill. And all of a sudden, you hear, yeah, Long Meadow Fire, we're on scene. And you look up and there they are, they're pulling up Corey Hill. The ambulance is pulling up Corey Hill, which we're right across the street. So, the topic for another discussion is part of one of my other meetings anyways.
Okay, good, all right.
Couple other things further down in the original letter. The refreshed one is on the package I gave you folks today. It's my five-year capital plan, which is part of a whole capital submittal. I pushed back, the air packs were initially scheduled for this year. Priority for us would be the ladder truck. So, I pushed that back another year primarily two reasons. The air packs are a great item to get on the grant process. Our age of our air packs isn't there yet. So, I need to wait one more year before I can apply for the federal grant for that and have a favorable outcome. And then the year after that would be to replace our car, too. I'm not sure it needs to be replaced yet, and I don't know if it's going to need to be replaced. The car is in decent shape. We just had to put a little bit of money into it. It's seven years old. We did some front brakes and a steering arm that was, you know, starting to corrode. But it's seven years old. Other than that, again, it runs great. We try to do our best to maintain it. I just want to, you know, as a place mark, I guess, for the five-year capital plan. So, I don't come back to you in a couple of years and say, hey, car two's falling apart, I need a new one. I don't want to do that. And also, which would be great if we could do it sooner, the parking lot is getting, we were built on a landfill. So, our parking lot, I don't know if you actually were able to see it. When you drive through that rear parking lot, it's, we got some swells and some, every year the DPW does a great job coming up sealing the potholes and the cracks. But it's something that has to get taken care of every year. And working with John and Frank Morandi, we got the pricing to get where that number came from. I'm not sure I'm sure if it's going to work in FY19, but just so it's there.
All right.
You said that car was seven years old?
No, you go ahead.
That car was seven years old?
Yeah, it's a 2000, well, it's car two. It's a Ford pickup truck. We call it car two. Yeah, it's a 2007 Ford pickup truck. That's the one that, when you go out with Ben. It's in great shape for a seven-year-old car. I mean, we take pride in our equipment. Any other visiting departments come through the department, they see, they see that our 1988 ladder truck. They're pretty amazed that, you know, we keep it up. If something breaks, we try to fix it. If it's major, I come before the board and ask. But most of the time, everything fits within the budget.
And that's a correct figure? $423,000?
No.
I was going to say, that's a lot.
It was revised, the new package I gave you. If you look at the front.
That he just gave us, yeah.
Yep, if you look on the front of that, it's $45,000.
That's much better than $243,000. What kind of car are you getting? Okay.
All right.
Before you get rid of anything, I'm the liaison for vehicles.
I heard that.
So, I'd like to come up and take a look at it.
Absolutely, well, we're not getting rid of anything.
Well, when you do.
Right, yep, yep. The only question I have is, our instructions from capital was, we need permission from you folks. So, are we going to have, we need to submit that by next Friday.
We're going to go over them at the end, after everyone presents them.
Oh, tonight?
Yeah.
So, we'll know by the end of tonight, basically. We can basically take the next step.
Right.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You safe out there?
Yeah. It's the same thing we have, it's just a simple model. We have the vehicle with the package on it.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Quinby. Are you guys dancing?
Yeah.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Quinby. Little soft shoe. That's what you're supposed to give us, not. How are you?
Not too bad, by yourself?
Good. Sorry about delaying your pointed rounds tonight.
No, that's all right. Same stuff you guys already have. Some fresh paper.
Thank you, okay. And your numbers haven't changed?
Nope.
All right, why don't you give us an overview of what you're looking for?
So, capital, three years ago, had requested that departments that have a lot of cyclical replacements consolidate into one budgetable number. So, if you look at the second page of our, the thing I just handed out, it has basically our IT inventory, the useful years. The IT inventory, the unit price, the useful years, and then what that breaks down to per year. So, you know, 600-plus computers, get five years out of them. You got to replace 20% of them every year.
Right.
You get five years out of them?
Right now, we're replacing ones that are eight years old. So, five years optimally. If we have to push it off, we're going to push it off.
Okay. And these are all, well, obviously, I understand with printers and servers and.
Yep. Switches, wireless access points, the wireless controllers, storage, that's our storage area network. That's the backend for our virtual environments, for our servers. Cameras, that's our network cameras across all buildings. Radios, that's just the school radios. They were not involved in our initial radio project. Then phones are the, those phones, classical phones. Tax lines.
And I assume with technology, the way it changes, you're, I don't want to say up against it anyways, but if you have a computer eight years, there's certainly computers out there that are much more efficient than the ones you have.
Or with this year, we'll finally replace our Windows XP computers with this upcoming year.
Those aren't being supported anymore, right?
They weren't supported.
Since July, June, July, or was it early April, that's what it was, yeah. Since I still have. Okay. All right. So, and this, obviously, your requests are more or less, when you say cyclical, you're going to have basically something similar every year.
Plan's the same thing. Refresh the quotes, refresh the numbers.
I suppose the prices on the computers are going down.
Definitely not.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, these replacement costs, you have three different places you asked.
We get them off state contracts.
State contracts?
Yeah.
How many computers you got?
650 around actual computers. That number keeps growing, you know. Everyone that didn't have one before is now finding a useful lead for one.
Is that within the school and everything?
Everything, everything, everything Islam.
Why do some tech computers at the schools come out of the school budget?
It's because we're one department. We cover all departments. So, that's why it all comes out of just really the IT budget. Same thing like the police does come out of the police, fires come out of fire.
So, they don't have the budget for this?
No, we do. It's all ultimately coming out of the same pocket, but it's just, you know, just different departments, so.
If there was anything that you had to cut, as well, would you cut?
Like, had to cut something out of there?
If you had to prioritize it, I guess, is the question.
Computers definitely be the top, then, you know, our phones.
Top for being cut or top for keeping?
Keeping.
Okay, okay.
Definitely need that.
But what's on the bottom of the list?
Probably printers. Those seem to be more preventative than otherwise. Yeah, with switches, you know, we have those everywhere. The technology on that's, we're still pretty good, but there's newer technology that can help us keep up better with the speeds that we need. Especially with the wireless. We're changing out wireless access points already because the technology's newer. More density, more, you know, we have, well, 1,300, today, we beat that 1,300 people using our public Wi-Fi. 1,300 devices.
Wow. What's storage on that? What's that mean?
It's a storage area network. So, it's kind of like a computer has a hard drive. This is like a hard drive for the network almost. It's like a shared hard drive.
All right. Any other questions? Very good. Discuss this and let you know.
I'll be hanging out on capital.
So, if we approve it, you'll approve it.
Easy.
All right. Next is Callenderi. Hey, Callan.
Hey.
I'm doing, sir.
Right. Trying to do two things at once.
I have to bring you guys a little more paper for your books.
Thank you.
These are our one and only.
Thank you.
Okay, so you are, why don't you explain to us what you're requesting, and then we'll go from there.
I'm requesting a vehicle for the recreation department, and more specifically for my use. Right now, my contract does give me some compensation for using my personal vehicle. What I didn't know is it would come to between 9,000 and 11,000 miles per year on my car. So, it just, I believe it just makes sense, instead of paying 55 cents a mile, just to actually purchase a vehicle that can, you know, better suit the needs of the recreation department. And in the long run, I believe it would actually save you some money because I would see the vehicle being a tank year plus vehicle for the recreation department. And then it would kind of release the strain, obviously, on my own personal car, which if I knew, I probably would have purchased a truck myself as opposed to a Jeep Wrangler. A little too small for, you know, bringing down, bringing around a couple hundred basketballs and, you know, equipment for Pine Knoll and bringing stuff back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
I know there's a nice truck up at the fire station.
You'll wait a couple of years, I think, on that one.
I feel like Monty Hall all of a sudden is an auction.
Let's make a deal.
That's right. All right, so you've got in the back here, you get the contract price of $27,399. I know you rounded up. One of my questions was, you had put that the Friends of Recreation are going to give a $5,000 donation. So, does that effectively knock down what you're looking for to 22?
Yeah, it would knock it down.
It's about 22.
About 22, I think.
Okay, 23, okay, all right.
And that's effectively essentially what the Friends of Recreation was actually created for? Was to assist the capital budgets for the recreation apartment.
And, I'm sorry. And if you're getting 55 cents a mile, roughly 9,000 to 10,000 miles, as you put in here, it's 5,500 bucks or so. So, in the course of five years, this will be paid for. Of course, I'd probably have to get another one, but depending on.
Well, I think this would obviously be a 10-plus year life.
Right.
You think about 9,000 or 10,000 miles per year. I mean, it's 100,000 miles in 10 years.
That's true.
It might even go further than that. It always depends, every car's a little different on a lifespan, but.
What was that $1,000?
He's getting reimbursed for mileage. So, if it's 55 cents a mile and it goes 9,000 to 10,000 miles, it's going to be. And I would assume, because you're not on call 24 hours, that this would not be something you take home. I would assume it would be parked at the rec.
I think.
Correct. Please stay somewhere.
Yeah.
I guess it would kind of consider how you look at my position. I think I'm always on call. But I do spend a lot of time on weekends coming back to town. And the other thing I do, because we have such a small staff, is I will do errands and deliveries and things like that for the recreation department on the way in and the way out. Like today, I'll be driving down to East Hartford to pick up a shipment for the recreation department. And what it does is it helps us save money on costs. And it's, you know, that's right here in my house. So, it kind of makes sense to kind of loop around and then bring it in in the morning.
All right. Any additional questions?
Yeah. Is it possible they could do it for the whole thing?
Oh, no.
Okay, I was just checking.
No, they don't have, no, it's like that. It's actually been fairly inactive until I became the director.
Okay.
So, I've kind of asked them to kind of revive it and start fundraising a little more. And with the help of the Bonfire Event, it's kind of helped a lot to get that account kind of revived.
And how did you come about the 2015 board? Is that locked in?
That is the state contract, so.
That's a state contract?
Yep. And a truck just makes complete sense in case I might be transferring chemicals for the pool. That way, they're not inside the cab with me like they are currently with my Jeep. So, just makes sense for moving stuff along those lines. And then, you know, every now and again, when you're trying to move 500 basketballs, it's nice to be able to strap them down on a truck, so.
True. All right. Any further questions?
We're going to require logos on all of that. You saw them on the logos.
That's one of the things we were talking about.
I would think so, yeah. Especially on a hook and ladder.
We'll call it Rec One.
Yeah, we do.
We'll have them taking out all my weekends.
On campus, I think, but it's something you can come up with.
Yeah, I mean, it would make a little more work for me to have to drive down, come back, drop off, get my car, drive down with that.
That is what we're doing with the other.
Yeah, it would add a little more time.
I get you, I get you.
Okay.
If I may mention another thing as well. This year, you noticed, we only have one capital project. It's because the capital planning committee asked that some of the other projects that are very important to the recreation department fall under the DPW's list.
Oh, okay.
So, there are a few on there that are very important to us that I just wanted to mention.
Field-related?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're field-related, but more specifically to the facility up at Pine Knoll. Currently have an absolutely gorgeous, beautiful pool.
Yes, you do.
But we don't have hot showers because we don't have a heating for the hot showers up there. That's something that I think would be kind of important. As well as the camp office up there at Pine Knoll. That's a beautiful building that is just studs right now that I think really would get my camp director out of functioning, out of a shed that's up there right now. So, it'd be nice to add that professionalism, as well as add the nurses department there, which would allow me to actually get certification from the state to get the camp tag onto the Pine Knoll summer program.
Okay.
And that also be, is part of the paving program, the parking lot up there. Now that the pool is done and no heavy machinery should be running up there. Bad parking lot up top is kind of decimated a bit when they put in the sewer system, as well as during the Pine Knoll construction. It'd be nice to kind of have that revived that is falling apart. We got.
Price tag on those, the hot showers?
That would be all in the DPW with Bruce Henny.
Okay.
More specifically, I know the office, because that was under me last year. That's north or south of $80,000. The parking lot, that would be something I think you should probably ask Bruce about. I mean, we talked with Bob about it, and he said between $10,000 and $30,000 is what that project would be. I know if you were to pave the entire driveways, which have been an issue in the past, I know that that includes water management, and that has a hefty price tag of about $200-plus thousand.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to mention those things are kind of important.
I'm glad you did.
I can answer a question, Paul. I'm going to ask in front of him. Did we, did the rec department ever take care of their own fields? Or did the DPW always have them?
Okay, I don't believe the rec department ever did.
Why you say that? Because I go to Southwood, because my team is out there. They take care of their own fields out there?
The delineation is, that's why we're the Islam metal recreation department and not the Islam metal parks and recreation department. And the only real difference is, I would actually be the person who would dispatch the teams, whereas right now, the DPW director dispatches them to, you know, all the outside stuff. So, John Collins, you know, is the person who takes care of that. And we work hand in hand. It just, I can't pick up the phone and say, hey, please go do this. I just give John a call and say, hey, this is really important to us. Could you send out the pink team for center field? It rained and the lines are no longer there. So, we work really well together, our relationship, you know, straight, so. But that's the delineation, yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Appreciate it.
All right. Running a couple minutes ahead. I don't see our building inspector. I don't know if you want to reread the meetings from last night? There's still left on there.
Sure, the state elections are on Tuesday, November 4, at Burchland Park Middle School from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Town offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11, in observance of Veterans Day. Board of Selectmen meeting and tax classification hearing will be on Tuesday, November 18, at 6:00 p.m. And the place is at the Council of Aging. If I remember to call that correctly. Okay, the Council of Aging. And the Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, November 25, will be at 6:00 p.m. in the town hall hearing room. And just to clarify, the Board of Selectmen meeting and tax classification hearing will be on Tuesday, November 18, at 6:00 p.m. at the Council of Aging. You're welcome.
And our building inspector's now here. Don't get comfortable. Come on up.
Not comfortable, I just did my last inspection for the day.
Mr. Gorman here.
How are you?
Chairman? Mr. Thorpe?
Hello there. Mr. Allen?
All right. And you are here, I'm a little confused, but you're out here looking for a vehicle.
Yes.
But what you put in here is an expense figure.
Correct.
So, in order to be a capital item, it's got to be minimum of $20,000.
I'm not buying, I don't want to buy it.
Right, you're looking for an expense reimbursement, in effect. And the other, next question is, you had, you had a total of $2,400, which had $1,000 for maintenance and $2,400 for gas. So, should be, is it $3,400 or is that?
Should be $3,400.
Okay. All right, so this was something that, what we'll have to do. I know, it's not a capital item, so we're going to have to work into your budget.
Yeah, that's why I have that there.
Okay.
That number's a moving target right now. It depends on the condition of the vehicle.
What do you mean?
Well.
Well, you're just asking for?
Yes.
Okay.
I may have to do something to the vehicle, new tires or whatever. I'm not sure.
But in addition to this, you're looking for, like, one of the vehicles that we have?
Yes.
Kicking around, as the expression goes? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, if that wasn't good, Ralph, that was.
We got a pickup truck.
Will you quit giving us pickup truck away? All right, so what we'd have to do first is identify the availability of a vehicle. So, what we can do, and once again, that, this sort of falls outside the capital project category because if we're just taking a vehicle from, you say, one department or from one, you know, one that's sitting around, if you will, and moving it, then it's not really a capital request, it's just a request. Okay. All right, so what we'll do is, we'll see what's around and we'll see what's, we'll see what's available. We'll have, we have a vehicle liaison so you can find out what's going on, what's going, you know, what's around, and then we'll go from there.
I appreciate that.
All right, no problem.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Now, I don't have to go back and do any more inspections. Done for the day.
Done for the day. That's always nice.
Always good. All right. Last but not least is police. All right. We have, we actually have five minutes or so. I know, last night in our, in our meeting before the regular, well, special town meeting, I'm sorry, um, we had Bob Perrin discussing the?
Yes.
The project of capping the landfill, which is something that's going to have to be done with the money. There's been money in the budget over the years to do that, but it's been reduced because it hasn't been done.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he came to us with a proposal to, to do that and I believe it was two or three phases and he was looking for our support, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I don't know if there's any discussion that the board wants to have in that, regarding that.
I did speak with him.
Mm-hmm.
Essentially it fits the board's pleasure. I just, it looks like they're gonna save us quite a bit of money, but it's just seemed like a little bit of a surprise, but he seems to, uh, be very sure that they can come in at that number and if, if that's the case, I think we should certainly investigate it um, a little further. Um, but certainly if we find that it's going to be something different, then we should reserve the right to be able to, uh, back up.
Okay, so we are, so Nick, he's taking this from here to capital effect?
Yes, that's what I think that got out of the conversation, the previous conversations, that the Board of Public Works will be presenting it to capital, but would like to do so with the support of the Board of Health if, um, we're able to be able to make statements of support, I believe, in that company.
Okay. Would, um, I suppose if it's Board of Health, I could defer to Chuck Gorman to, to make a motion for, to, to endorse, I guess would be the best way, the capital article.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to support Bob Perrin on the, um, land, on the dump on Summers Road.
Okay, some vote?
To pursue it. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
No?
No.
All right, take a vote.
All in favor?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Could you say aye too?
I, I gotta say, I gotta say I want that with him.
Yeah.
He's using, he's using everything he can use up there.
Yeah.
You know, to fill him, he definitely saved us money.
He really knows exactly what's going on up there.
And while Bobby Adams left there all those years, this is gonna come in handy right now.
Unfortunately, he's not listening to you, then.
They're gonna be using all that up there also.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, great.
Little dig.
Um, all right.
Dig the dirt, you know?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll keep my day job.
Um, and now our final, our, our final, uh?
Was that the sheet?
Capital plan request person is here in, in lieu of our chief.
Someplace warm one. All right, guys.
Come on here, how about you?
Sir? Hands down, look after five.
Very nice.
Okay.
I've got a deal, a sweet deal for the building inspector for a vehicle.
I was, you know, that's why I was waiting, I was holding up on that because I was wondering if you guys were trading in or if you had something that, uh?
Well, what, uh, you have in front of you right now is the capital request that the chief submitted to you. He and I received estimates, uh, from MHQ, the dealer who provides us our cruisers. In addition to that, I solicited another quote for a different type of vehicle. Right now, we've been acquiring two vehicles a year and that's worked out very well keeping the major repairs down. And, uh, we have two vehicles that have rather high mileage now. One is the court liaison officer's car, it's a two thousand five Taurus Sedan. It's ten years old. We got it in October of oh-four and it has ninety-four thousand, uh? Let's see.
Two thousand five.
It's a two thousand five, it has ninety-four thousand twenty-five miles as of this morning. What I've done is I've printed out, uh, maintenance records for that vehicle and the supervisor's unmarked vehicle. I have a copy of that for each of you.
Is that the?
The blue unmarked, that's the one the supervisor's normally drive. That has a hundred and two thousand eight hundred miles on it, which is rather high for a patrol vehicle. This court officer's car is basically used to go back and forth to court, to go to detective bureau meetings, transport prisoners to court. It, in my opinion, should have never been purchased. It is a sedan, a family sedan that has no cage to transport prisoners in and it shouldn't be used as such. And my, es- there's an estimate for a replacement for that vehicle, which would be a Taurus sedan, we now refer to it as interceptor sedan, in the back. With, uh, for a total of twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, which is substantially less than replacing a patrol unit. Savings of approximately nine thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. These are quotes under the Plymouth County contract. They, uh, have to sell the vehicles to those under. And that contract expires in December, but I'm told that the price increases aren't gonna be marginal at best. So what I think I'd like to propose to you folks is that we replace the oh-eight Crown Vic that has a hundred and two thousand miles on it and replace the court officer's car, which is ten, ten years old and ninety-four thousand miles on it. The last two vehicles we acquired, I traded in two thousand eleven Crown Victoria. It, uh, had some mechanical problems, it was kind of a lemon. That's why we chose to get rid of that one. It actually was towed to, uh, MHQ by them and they gave us four thousand dollars for that. However, I traded in a two thousand eight Crown Victoria and we gave us four hundred dollars for that. So based upon our last auction, we had some real clunkers.
I saw them.
And what people bid on those, the auction was way more than we got for the trade. So the oh-five Taurus is of no trade in value to the town. If we took that and gave it to another department or sold it, the auction would be more beneficial to the, to the municipality than it would. That, the thing with the, the auction is that money goes back to the general fund, so we would lose.
Right, you'd lose your?
We'd lose a little trade in value, but obviously nothing, you know, four hundred bucks or something.
Right.
Actually, nothing for the, the, uh?
Taurus?
Taurus, but the Crown Vic would be somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred. That's what they gave me this year, I don't know less, less next year I would imagine. So probably those vehicles should be disposed of at, at public auction rather than trade them in.
Okay.
At this point.
Now, do you usually rotate two vehicles out a year?
Yes.
Okay. And what's their life expectancy, five years? Well, I see you guys, they're seven or eight years.
It depends on the, the function, you know? The supervisor's car obviously doesn't get the mileage that a normal patrol vehicle is. I, I believe in the chief's dissertation here, he talked about the time the cars spend idling, that, that's, you know, tech on the engines.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I want to say that patrol vehicles, the SUV interceptors and sedans get more use than this, this one that I'd like to replace.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, any questions?
Is it possible that you could just go down, you know, things are tough everywhere around. Is it possible that you could just go to replacing just one vehicle as opposed to two? Have you ever thought about that? And two, two-part question.
Okay.
What are the, are surrounding towns doing with regards to, um, maybe they're letting it go a little longer as far as the mileage goes?
I, I don't know.
Have you heard any? Okay.
No, I know that, uh, Wilbraham has switched over mostly the SUVs, Hammond's going mostly to the SUVs.
Okay.
The Taurus interceptor sedans have kind of proved to be undersized, they're very tight. When you have a gun belt and a radio on and a computer there, it's, it, you can really no longer have a two-person patrol vehicle. If, if you wanted to prove off, there's no one car, it doesn't work, it's just too small.
Well, understanding that safety is, is, is first, but if there's a way that we could stretch it out a little bit further, there's been, you know, a town or a city that's been doing it a little bit longer and it's worked for them.
I'm not aware of it. Uh, I've been taking care of the cruisers for about two years now.
Mm-hmm.
And we've avoided any major repairs, but for the oh-five Taurus, we had to put a transmission into that, that cost us two thousand dollars. And then there are normal things, brakes and, you know, things like that that we do all the time. I don't know about, if you keep them longer, I, I think it would be penny wise and pound foolish. I think you're gonna start putting major repairs into these vehicles if you, you're keeping them in the excess of, you know, this one's got a hundred and two, we've been very lucky with this. We've had a couple of clunkers that were just lemons that, you know, we were fortunate enough to trade in.
What's that Ford Taurus got for miles?
Ninety-four thousand.
Ninety-four thousand twenty-five before Pat went to court this morning.
Okay, any questions, Bill?
Uh, no, I'm all set.
Okay. All set. All right, thanks. We will take this under advisement and we'll let you know where we're, we're gonna discuss this later. Go from there.
All right. Thank you.
Take care, guys. All right. Now, is it the wishes of the board to just get right into this and, uh?
Go through and?
You want to do the rest of that? That's fine. Uh, then what we'll do first is, are going back to our new business, which is the land takings. Um, Betterly Lane and Wisteria Lane, and I believe the clerk, the clerk gets the pleasure of reading, reading these into record.
Okay. At a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Isla Meadow held on the twenty-eighth day of October two thousand fourteen, we the undersigned selectmen of said town by virtue of authority of chapter seventy-nine of the general laws of the Commonwealth and in the exercise of every other power and authority in us, having complied with all the preliminary requirements prescribed by law and in accordance with a vote of the inhabitants of the town passed at special town meeting of October twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, and having adjudged the land necessary for a public way, we have taken and, and by these per- presence, do take for and in behalf of the Town of Isla Meadow, a municipal corporation, the following described lands for a public way. Betterly Lane, beginning at an iron pen in the easterly land of Prospect Street, said iron pen being at the northernly corner of land addressed as num- uh, two-hundred-and-thirty-two Prospect Street and Running Fence. North zero-five dash zero-one and zero degrees. East long, the easterly land of Prospect Street, a distance of eight, eighty-five feet to a concrete-bound fence by a curve to the left having a radius of twenty-five feet and a length of nine, excuse me, thirty-nine and twenty-seven, twenty-seven one-hundredths feet to a concrete-bound fence, a distance of one-hundred-eighty-four, excuse me, one-hundred-seventy-four and ninety-two one-hundredths feet to a concrete-bound fence by a curve to the right having a radius of one-hundred-and-eighty feet and a length of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-point-four-eight feet to a concrete-bound fence, a distance of fifty-nine-point-two-four feet to a concrete-bound fence by a curve to the left having a radius of one-hundred-and-twenty feet and a length of eighty-three-point-one-five feet to a concrete-bound fence, a distance of forty, that's forty-point-one-five feet to a concrete-bound fence by a curve to the left having a radius of thirty feet and the length of thirty-six-point-nine-three feet to a concrete-bound fence by a curve to the right having a radius of sixty feet and the length of two-hundred, two-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-three-five feet to a concrete-bound, hence, a distance, excuse me, a distance of one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet to a concrete-bound, hence, by a curve to the right having a radius of one-hundred-and-eighty feet and a length of one-hundred-and-twenty-four feet point seven-five to a concrete-bound, hence, uh, north, um, excuse me, north forty-six dash eighteen, eight, excuse me, eighteen dash fifty-nine west, a distance of fifty-nine-point-two-four feet in a concrete-bound, hence, by a curve to the left having a radius of one-hundred-and-twenty feet and a length of eighty-point-nine-eight feet to a ri- excuse me, iron pen, hence, north eighty-four dash fifty-nine, a distance of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-point-nine-two feet to the iron pen at the point of beginning, containing four, forty-four thousand eighty-three square feet. The interest taken hereby is a fi- simp- excuse me, is a fee simple in the land. Any trees upon the land described herein are included in this taking, insomuch as no damage will be sustained by reason, reason of such taking, no damages will be awarded. The above is a true copy of the order and then it's to be witnessed, um, by all of us on the Board of Selectmen. We here to set our hands and seal this, the twentieth day of October twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen. You move to accept it.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept Betterly Lane on behalf of the town.
Some votes.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Any further discussion?
So I don't have to read it again?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I almost said amen.
I'm just at first part and then begin and start over.
Oh. Okay, one more.
You got another one coming up, so.
And I have to read the first part too? Okay. At a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Isla Meadow held on the twenty-eighth day of October two thousand fourteen, we the undersigned selectmen of said town by virtue of the authority of chapter seventy-nine of the general laws of the Commonwealth and in the exercise of every other power and authority in us, having comply, compiled, complied with all preliminary requirements prescribed by law and in accord, in accordance with a vote of the inhabitants of, of the town passed at special meeting of October twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, and having adjudged the land necessary for a public way, have taken and by this per- presence, do take for and in the behalf of the Town of Isla Meadow, a municipal corporation, the following described land for a public way. Wisteria Lane, beginning at a concrete-bound set on the southern, southerly line on Summers Road, said bound be located southeast a distance of fifty-five-point-eight feet from a stone-bound found on the southerly line of Summers Road. Hence, along the western, westerly line of Wisteria Lane measured on a curve to the right having a radius of twenty-five feet and an arc length of thirty-eight-point-nine-one feet to a concrete-bound. Hence, along the west, westerly lane, westerly line of Wisteria Lane, south eighteen feet, fifty-eight feet, fifty-seven inches, west, a distance of one-hundred-and-seventy-four-point-sixty-nine feet to a concrete-bound. Hence, along the westerly line of Wisteria Lane measured on a curve to the right having a radius of four-hundred-and-seventy feet to an arc length of ninety-nine-point-four-four feet to a concrete-bound. Hence, along the western, westerly line of Wisteria Lane measured on a curve to the right having a radius of twenty-five feet on an arc length of twenty-three-point-four-five feet to a concrete-bound. Hence, along the southerly line of Wisteria Lane, measured on a curve to the left having a radius of sixty feet on an arc length of two-hundred-and-ninety-two-point-three-three feet on a concrete-bound. Thus, excuse me, hence, along the easterly lane of the W- Wisteria Lane, excuse me, hence, along the easterly, easterly line of Wisteria Lo- Lane, measured on a curve, uh, to the right having a radius of twenty-five feet on an arc length of twenty-point-one-eight feet on a concrete-bound. Hence, along the easterly line of Wisteria Lo- Lane, measure on a curve to the left having a radius of five-hundred-and-thirty feet on an arc length of one-hundred-and-nineteen-point-seventy-six feet to a concrete-bound. Hence, along the easterly line on Wisteria Lane, north eighteen feet, fifty-eight feet, fifty-seven inches east, a distance of one-hundred-and-seventy-two-point-two-three feet to a concrete-bound. Hence, along the easterly line of Wisteria Lane measured on a curve to the right having a radius of twenty-five feet on an arc length of forty-point-zero-five feet to a concrete-bound. Hence, along the southerly line of Summers Road measured on a curve to the left having a radius of four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty feet, an arc length of one-hundred-and-ten-point-four-four feet to a concrete-bound at the point of beginning. The above described parcel of land is known as Wisteria Lane on a plan recorded in the Hampton County Registry of Heeds in Plan Book three-hundred-and-sixty-three, page two. Uh, the interest taken hereby is a fee simple in the land. Any trees upon the land described herein are included in this taking, insomuch as no jam, damage will sustain, will be sustained by reason of such taking, no damage will be awarded. The above is a true copy of the order and witness, therefore, we have here, uh, here on to set our hands and sealed on this day, on this twenty-eighth day of October two thousand fourteen and it's to be signed by the Board of Selectmen.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Wisteria Lane on behalf of the town. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right. Now, why don't we get back to the capital plan requests, since, since there's some folks here waiting? Yeah, we're gonna, we'll get back to the capital plan requests and, uh?
Okay.
We can go through those in, I guess, in order of appearance.
Okay.
So we'll start with, we'll start with Tom Florence's request.
Okay, just for clarification, this is, um, through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
This is whether or not they would be moving forward to go to appropriations or to go into capital?
Yes.
With these requests?
Yes. We're just looking for our endorsement. Uh, any, anyone have any comments on, on the first, which would be the, the part one is the workstation for the six employees, with an approximate cost of twenty to twenty-two thousand dollars. And the second item was the document imaging of all vital records, which Tom said was about twenty-one thousand dollars, but I believe he's getting a final quote, um, on that. $21,000, but I believe he's getting a final quote on that. I'll be happy to start.
Yeah.
I know, obviously, the workstations are important. I think if there's a priority here, I think the document imaging would be the more important. And I think Tom agreed with that, is that, you know, in my opinion, it's important to get all these records and then Brian may agree, but to get these records on, you know, into an imaging format rather than keeping them in hard copies for various reasons.
Through the chair, it just seems like there may be a possibility of some grant funds out there as well as that other thing that we were talking about. I don't know if you're, if we're looking as a board to approve everything, or is it a certain number that we're looking to approve, or?
I just.
I don't know.
I think we're just trying to, obviously, see, and I hate to use the word, see if there's merit in it, but if there's important items here that, in any of the board, you know, choices that we think, we think should be brought forward, then obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna give it our little seal of approval here and they can go forward to capital and see if they can, to a capital thing.
But if funds are available, otherwise, so if we say yes and we find out there are funds available someplace else, we can take that back.
Well, I think the problem, and Nick can correct me if I'm wrong, is we're in a cycle here where they, if we approve this, there's, I'm pretty sure if they were, if Tom were to find a grant, it's not gonna happen within the next one or two or three months, it may be a process. So this basically has to be done before the budget, during, as part of the budget process so we can get the capital planning. So I think we can hopefully think that there'll be money out there for these, you know, maybe some grants and whatnot, but I think we have to look at it sort of like that we're gonna be funding it now, so. So that's the way, you know, that's probably the way, the best way to handle it. Any comments?
No.
Okay. What does the, what does the board think as far as both of these items?
Not both.
What was that?
Not both.
Okay.
I think the imaging, yes.
Okay.
Just for funding the $21,000.
All right. So do we have to make a motion, Nick, or is it just?
The board's going through the process.
Yeah. Okay. Then it sounds like for that, for our purposes, it's unanimous that I'd like to make a motion to allow Tom Florence to proceed with capital planning for the, for the document imaging portion of his request and the furniture, we can deal with, you know, God willing, the finances will be better at some point in the future, I don't know if I'll still be alive, but they, but I think the, and I think we all agree that the document imaging is the more important of the two items, so I'd like to make a motion to approve that as the, for Tom to go forward to the capital planning. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Any further discussion?
Also, can we include in there if, I don't know if it's necessary, it may not be, if other funds become available, then it would be withdrawn from capital.
Sure.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the motion to include that, that if other funds become available in the timeframe that, that we're looking at, that, that we wouldn't need, the capital plan would not be needed in this case.
Same.
Second.
Okay, like, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Now the original motion.
I'd like to make a motion to, yeah, I'm sorry, we made a motion, we seconded it, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, the smallest one in the group. Falls fleet of Aston Martins, if anyone's for this. Okay. I think I'll open that up, yes.
The, we're just voting on one thing, we're not voting on the full five-year plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're just voting on what they're bringing forward this year. Now, next item is the ladder truck. Any comments?
I would, I would like, like the fire, like the police department, they'd give us a breakdown on the repairs of that fire truck or what they've done over the last few years. You know, any costs that were incurred to fix it or, you know, like the police department did.
Mm-hmm. Anyway, gave us a rough figure. When do these have to be in the capital? Any other comments?
Oh, yeah, I can see that too. The problem is we're not meeting again before the 7th.
Right.
And, but once, just referring to, through the chair, to Nick, if we don't agree with this right now, he would not be able to put it on capital, but if we agree with it, we can't pull it back.
I would think, as a member of the Capitol Committee is here, but I think if you take, I think if you're looking at the project, the board is, as the chairman was saying, they're looking at it on its manner, do you think it's needed? I think if you propose it going forward and then especially early on in the process, when capital starts its deliberations, that if you hold a project back, that helps capital with their decision in the process. It's if you try to put something on after the fact, that it becomes more difficult for them. I mean, you're giving them your best effort, your best belief in what is important, but educating you ready is, is your primary goal. Do you use that?
I understand what the selectmen board is saying, we're making a decision, well, I don't want them to say, I'll make the statements, we're making a decision without the information, with some of the information that we're asking for.
Do the chairman, you mean, not to argue?
No, never an argument.
No, no, not to argue the chief, argue the chief's point, but if the board were thinking, is the thinking where if the average is above a certain point per year over the last five years, is this sort of what it is, or?
Sure.
So as far as expenses? I know you said roughly $16,000. Educate me here because I know we need it. I know, I, I'm concerned about the safety of the, of the firefighters. I'm also concerned about the fact that it only goes out eight or nine times a year, and a million bucks is a lot of money for eight or nine times a year, and I, you know what I mean? It's, so I'm, I'm like, I've got that thick-headed accountant thing working here, so.
The answer is it goes out more than eight or nine times a year. When it goes out, does it necessarily go up and go into ladder operation? Not.
Okay.
Not every time. But when it does go out, it's definitely a crucial portion of the operation. Again, we got, we got the industrial park, the roofs down there, it was a, it was a lifesaver on Sudacor, had a major gas leak on the roof, the membrane roof was actually a balloon of natural gas. Guys were upstairs, it was at nighttime, guys were up there, they needed to evacuate the roof quickly. It would have been, you know, not an impossible feat on a ground ladder. First of all, that roof is, you know, 40 feet in the air, so the reach, the reach with this is, is an important operation.
Yep.
I hate to say eight or nine times a year it gets used, but the eight or nine times it gets used, it's crucial.
That's very important.
Crucial for the operation.
Yep.
Talking mutually, it does go to Long Meadow, it's been to Wilberham, it's been to Hampton. As many times we've gone to those towns with fire trucks, whether it's a pumper or a ladder truck, they've come to our town, and if you look at the numbers over the years, again, some years might be skewed in our favor or their favor, but it is, that's, that's the way, the nature of how the departments operate.
Right.
Without, without mutual aid, we wouldn't be a fire department. It's important.
And I guess another thing, I suppose, in a perfect world, we would have gotten this answer, but I don't suppose, and I know it's too late to do that now in our timeframe, but like, if we had an independent analyst, for lack of a better word, look at this, look at your current ladder truck.
Not to interrupt you, but I talked to the Springfield Police Department, they have a ladder truck there. I asked them how many times they go out with their, he told me 3,500 times a year.
They'll do 3,500 runs a year.
Runs.
Runs, correct. Our truck, our total department, we do 535 runs average a year. One of their ladder, ladder one out of headquarters already, ladder three out of the White Street, they'll run 3,000 times a year. Does it, a lot of those calls are medical calls. It's not a ladder truck, it's a troop transport.
Right.
So is that truck getting beat up on the streets in Springfield, the Poples, yeah, it's an expensive troop transport. If you go back to Section 4, that was the preliminary refurb information that we received from a vendor last year, and then if you flip through that section, there's also another refurb information from a company, actually the company that we were talking to, we had our demo, that doesn't recommend refurbishing based on the year of our truck already. Again, this, the preliminary refurb price back then was $580,000, not touching the engine, not touching the transmission.
There's a lot of information, through the chair. There's a lot of information in here and, and you took some time to put it together and you want us to evaluate it in the decision tonight, so maybe it's one of those things where we go through the rest of them and then come back and take a few minutes to review this information before, before we make a decision.
Yeah, because I don't want to just get a million-dollar fire truck to have a new truck, you know?
No, I, and I don't either. I want to make sure it's, what we do is right for the town.
Well, the town got a lot of different big items coming up, you know, that's why.
Understandable.
And like, I get the same concern, Paul is, you know, for the safety of the firemen.
Right.
But, you know, million dollars, a lot of money, you know, if we get another few years out of the truck, you know?
Yep.
I share that too, about the safety.
Do they have a common life expectancy, I suppose, not depending on terrain and whatnot?
If you talk to Springfield, for them to get 28 years out of a fire truck, impossible.
Yeah.
You read some of the standards, they tell you, you know, if a truck is in inner-city, you know, 10 to 15 years, after that point, it should go to as a spare piece. Again, if we ever, if we were fortunate enough to buy the ladder truck, I would anticipate getting another 25 to 30 years out of the vehicle. Lead times, if we were to order this truck, again, in July or August, our truck's gonna be pretty close to, you know, 28, 29 years old by the time the new one comes in. And again, nothing major, I mean, the engine's been good, the transmission's been good, we have the truck serviced and PM'd every year. So, and I understand there's a lot of priorities in town.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take a, we'll take a few minutes to review this after and then we'll get back to it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. I do have a buyer for the, for the ladder, the old ladder truck, if we were to sell this, I know it's telling a bunch of trees on the side.
Well, if it's one you're thinking of, you could pay a $700 grant for, we'll be all set.
I'm good with that.
That come with a guarantee?
We'll get you with the new one.
All the way, all the way out of the driveway, right? All right. And next item is IT. And I don't know what, I'll start this one, we asked, Chris Ryan, is this, I mean, you must ask for this, something similar every year.
Yes.
Because, as we said, it's a cyclical thing, so. And every year is put in the budget, they're put in the capital plan?
Yep.
Because I know, you know, you're, you're in the unenviable position of being a slave to these things. The technology is that you can't not have it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Or you fall behind and, you know, nowadays, you know, because I deal with it all the time, and if you don't have something that works well, it's, it's, it's just, it's very frustrating and obviously, some of these have to do with the schools.
Yep.
And I know they're gonna be looking for some things in the next few years and, you know, part of the, technology's a big thing with people moving into town and things, so I'm just sort of thinking out loud here.
With the rebuilding project, all the technology that we're buying is, we can't pull it out and put it into a development.
Right. Okay.
Say that again?
All the stuff that we buy, you know, like a new high school pass, for instance, all of the technology that we have in the current high school, we can pull out and repurpose into the new high school. This switches a lot of those access points, computers.
So you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Right. Or, you know, stuff that we bought that you gotta go out and fill the patch.
Okay.
Thin, through the chair? Thin clients?
For all non-educator staff on the school side and as well as the town side, they are, it's the desktop part of virtual desktops.
Okay. Not break the time, you know, for this type?
This one's, this one's a little tough to explain.
Okay.
Instead of traditional, buying traditional computers for every desk where you use 5% of the capabilities, we do virtual desktops. So we have four servers and we run 200 computers off of there.
Okay. And that's the thin, that's what the thin client is?
The thin client is the part that goes on the desk itself.
Okay. And those have to be replaced every year?
Not every year.
You said 20%?
For the thin clients, yeah, every five, because it's still a pretty emerging technology and there's a lot of new features that keep coming out.
Any more?
Through the chair.
Sure.
What do we do with these old computers? Like when I was up to the school, they're taking all those computers.
Right now, we're.
We can't sell them or do something with them, like get some money back?
Right now, we're wholly unknown for spare parts, we keep all of them, so we still have running.
All those?
Right now, yeah, other than that, we'll go recycling.
Because if we're replacing those computers for the ones I saw, that, that you shipped down to the rumor, the Dolly there?
Yeah.
They're those thinner ones, thinner computers, the ones that were in the room were all huge things. But if we replace them, how are we gonna use parts off of them for what?
Because we still have a lot of those under in service.
We have some there.
A lot of the computer labs.
Are you replacing all those though?
No, that's, that's for the next year, is to get rid of the rest of them. And even like, it's like we can sell them, because a lot of the stuff that's on them is actually licensed to the town or to the schools, so we would have to wipe one, which makes some next use days.
So they're more like junk when you replace them, huh?
Yeah, I mean, by the time we replace them next year, it'll be nine years old.
You don't get any recycling money for, for the metals or anything?
Recycle, we get the recycle over free, it's about that.
That's, that's a benefit right there.
Can't use all for beginners?
No.
Do you want to go back to a two-man saw? I mean, that's, that's. All right, any questions?
But that's the best you can do on those prices?
Um, that's.
On the cost?
We'll save a little bit with providing in bulk, like I know for the, we bought laptops for the teachers this year, we saved 6%. You know, that's something that, that's a negotiation when you order them.
All right, and then just, once again, for reference, last year, that was a similar dollar amount that went through?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last year, actually, I think it was a little more.
Okay.
It was $374.
Now, that's, that's, through the chair?
Yeah.
That's a set, that'll be set.
For this year, yep.
That's not gonna go up, that's.
That's, that's, what is, what is this?
I don't want you being like a used car salesman.
Go back and go back and say, oh, I needed this or I needed that, you know?
That's my youth tonight, trying to get rid of the pickup from the fighter fire. You've been a used car salesman.
My phones are all at the high school?
No, there's actually no phones at the high school.
Okay.
Phones are, right now, Town Hall, Rex, COA, Maple Shade, Meadow Brook, with this, this pushes them out, Burson's gonna be our next one, their phone system is, was on its last legs five years ago. That one needs to be replaced drastically.
So we have 506 phones?
Yep. And this is for an IP-based system, so that's not 506 phone lines. We consolidate all the old copper lines into an IP-based system. So like, right now, we have probably 75 phone lines, phone numbers, and all goes through what's called. Uh, we consolidate all the old copper lines into an IP-based system. So like, right now, we have like probably seventy-five phone lines, or phone numbers, and all goes through what's called, so we pay for twenty actual talk paths, and we have seventy-five phone numbers. It's been a pretty substantial savings over the years.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you, Ryan, on those computers, we got six hundred and fifty of them?
Yep.
How do we keep track of those? Are they all serial numbered, or?
Yep, serial numbers, we have a tracking system that we use on the backend.
And, and their, the serial number coincide with where they are in a school, or?
Yeah, yep, yeah, we have, uh, for the ones that we handed out, we got, you had teachers sign off on them, you know, I took a computer with this serial number, we signed off on it.
Just a lot of money. I know.
It's, uh, yeah, it's an annual, it's an annual expense, unfortunately, but.
Yeah.
It's a necessity.
It's gone up every year?
Uh, actually, believe it or not, it's about the same.
So it's about the same? Is there any way that, are there, I'm just asking you to see, is there any way that you can get down a little bit? You know, instead of.
If I could get it down, I would've done it already.
Okay, well, that's a good answer, that's a good answer.
I don't wanna spend money, just spend money.
We don't wanna spend money, Jessica, spend money either.
This plan does coordinate with the, uh, technology plan for the school, by the way.
Okay.
All right, any further questions?
No, I'm set.
Okay, um, in that case, I guess, once again, is, uh, this is almost an annual event, if you will, so I guess, unless there's any objection, I'd like to make a motion to accept the technology, um, the IT, um, capital request for.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Um.
If I go through the chair real quick?
Yes.
Uh, just to reinforce what Nick had said about the fire requests, I am a vice chair of the capital committee, so if down the road, there's further information where you guys decide to withdraw your support, then the other capital committee will take the under advisement. It's better for us to have it, an approval of it upfront, and then down the road, say, okay, you wanna pull it back.
Then have us come to you and say, hey, you got an extra million dollars, you want us to, okay.
And for the funding part, the funding gets worked out with, uh, capital appropriations, whether it goes debt exclusion or, um, through the regular capital.
Let me, let me ask you something through the chair?
Sure.
Um, if we were to make a decision on the eighteenth, you know, to be able to go through all of the information, how detrimental will that be to your, to the, um, capital, uh, planning board, capital, planning?
I'm sure we can make an exception for it, it's not like you're saying it's gonna be February, you know?
Okay, all right, so we could take some, some time on that, okay? All right.
Wonderful.
That's.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your input.
Thank you, sir.
It's a world of capital plan.
All right, next item is, is the rec department. And that's a request for a vehicle. Um, any comments, questions?
You want to comment?
Um, I don't know, I myself think he should have a, a truck, I think, uh, for what we're spending for mileage, you know? Looks like, he says, I seen a Jeep loaded up with stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, you take a chance of getting it stolen on the other side, you know? Because there's no way you can lock that.
I wish we were doing the, I know you were sort of joking about it, but I wish we did have the vehicle from the, from the fire department that was available, because that probably would've been, you know, something that could've been used, um, in that regard, um. Go ahead.
I just wanna respond to that, I guess, I can't say that I totally disagree, but my concern would be, as the town takes on more cars, we're taking on a greater expense, um, and it's the expense of the insurance, the expense of maintenance, and we have several people who are wanting cars at this point. Um, I just think we just need to be cautious of, it, it could be a slippery slope.
Yep.
And so that, that would be my concern, I know he does do a lot of traveling, um, but I don't know if we would be saving money by purchasing a car because of the incidentals that would go along with that. It would be nice, I, I don't know, um, are there any other cars, one of the other things, are there any other cars that may be, um, just as effective for him, that don't cost as much? Um, I'd be interested in knowing, knowing that, I know he went, he stated that he went on the, um.
Yes, just through the state.
Through the state, yeah, and is that the, is that the only car that they offer, or the Fords? I'm just trying to educate myself on that.
You know, I, I just couldn't say, I, I don't know, I just know that it is a state-approved contract that we could use, instead of going through a bid process, I'm not familiar with all the makes and brands.
Okay, makes and brands. Uh, I see you nodding your head, are there any other?
We have Chevy, Dodge, and Ford at the state.
Okay, and.
They don't have a vehicle for.
Okay, so, so the, the, certainly you wanna make sure that he's getting something that he's gonna be able to put all of the equipment in, but I don't know if that's the best bang for our buck, cause it was the only one that was presented to us. And again, we're in a dilemma of.
Yeah, I wish he was here, because I would, I would think, with the same thing as, as Ryan said, I would think, doing his due diligence, he would've brought us the best, the best deal, I don't think he would, you know? I mean, I'm just saying that in a, in a perfect world, that's what I would expect, so, I, but I don't, I'm.
I'm not saying that he didn't.
No, no, I realize that, but I'm just saying, uh.
Would they go through the same place you get the police vehicles, right?
They don't deal with used vehicles, do they? Just new?
DPW?
No, probably, this is MHQ.
Well, you know, to the chair, you're not, you know, for what you said, Angela, you know, but we can't expect these people, uh, to put sixty thousand miles on their own vehicle either. You know, unless we put it in our contract that, that, you know, they'll be driving their own car or whatever, but, you know? I mean, because, I mean, I know he's put tons of miles on that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not even.
Everything, and then the trading value.
Yeah, of your car, absolutely.
He's gonna get, if he trades in, he's not gonna get nothing either, you know?
I, I, I don't dispute that at all, it's just that maybe there might be another one that's not as pricey, that has the same thing for our buck, um, and I'd like to see, uh, see if we could possibly look at, because a pit chart would be great.
And actually, if, if, you know, getting down to, I know he's requesting, his capital request is, is a thirty thousand, I believe, if you look at his quote, which is twenty-seven, four, minus the five thousand from the Friends of Recreation, you're actually looking at twenty-two, four, twenty-two, five, so, in that regard, with the, with, I mean, just something to throw out there for thought, with the money that the Friends of Recreation are putting in, I don't think you're gonna get, well, I guess they'd be putting it regardless.
They would put it in for the money, right.
So. But for that dollar amount, um, I don't know, to, I guess, to delay the process, uh.
Well, you don't know what the dollar amount is.
Well, I'm just saying for this, yeah.
Oh, I guess it would be delaying it, um, but from what Mr. Quimby had said, that we could put that in on the eighteenth, get that information.
We don't wanna put everything in on the eighteenth, cause that's.
No, not everything, no, 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 we're talking about, we're only talking about two right now, right?
We still, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, we've said it.
And he also said, he, uh, Mr. Me, Mr. Quimby also said that we could pull it as well.
True, true, so we could, uh.
And so, so we could, uh, possibly entertain a motion for the idea of having a car, um, with, um, the possibility of him looking to see.
As I say.
Presenting us with something else.
What would happen? I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, what would happen if we voted on this tonight, and then he went out and found another vehicle that was a little, like, I mean, I'm sure you'd love it if it was, it was a less dollar amount, you know, lesser dollar amount, but that wouldn't be a problem swapping those out, and the, okay, all right.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right.
What do you know?
Well, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna hopefully approve this, and if Colin, if we go back to Colin and say, just, you know, check and see if you can find a, a more reasonable-priced vehicle, we can always swap them in the, you know, with capital, but at least we'll get the, for lack of a better word, a placeholder in it with a dollar amount. And then if, say Colin comes back and says, I found a pickup for twenty-five grand, then we'd get it for a net twenty after the Friends of Recreation did it instead of this, so, uh, which would thrill capital planning even more, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, we're going to ask Colin to provide us with alternatives, are we going to look at that?
I think.
I think it should be coming from Colin.
Well, I do too, yeah.
And so maybe he can provide us with two alternatives?
Okay.
Okay, that are, are less than the original, whatever.
If you can find, yeah, if you actually find one of those.
Exactly, exactly.
You're not gonna get a character, a truck, or a vehicle for what he needs, too much, too much cheaper than twenty-two thousand, unless you get a.
Well, it wouldn't be twenty-two thousand, it would be twenty-seven, because the five thousand, whatever, is going to come from the Friends regardless, so, whatever it is.
It comes in at twenty-six, we're saving a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's worth a look.
Okay, in light of all that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the capital request for Colin Drury for the Recreation Department for a new vehicle.
Provide?
Well, uh, we obviously provided that, uh, well, if, if he comes in with a new one, we can just, we can just replace it, but.
But we're asking him to, though.
Right.
Is my understanding, so I think that would be part of the motion.
I suppose, um, because now we don't have a, uh, just a dollar amount in effect, because we're, uh, okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the, uh, capital planning request of Colin Drury for the, the current vehicle that he has, with, with the caveat that if he should come back with a vehicle that's more reasonably priced, we can replace this vehicle with that vehicle with capital planning.
Um, I'll, I'll move it for conversation, sure.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
Okay, the, my understanding is, we're trying to ask him to come in with two other quotes.
Right.
So you said with the caveat, if he were, that we're asking.
Well, if he comes, I said, if he comes back with a quote that's better than this, we're still gonna ask him that, but I don't think we have to put that in the motion to ask him to come back, we can ask him that, you know what I mean?
Are you asking?
Who's liaison? Are you the liaison? Yeah, just, if you can get ahold of him tomorrow and say, try to get two more quotes, or get two more quotes.
Get two more quotes, okay, all right, that's fine.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, yeah, all right, next item, um, as we've previously discussed, we're gonna find a, uh, another source for the building inspector of something, we'll see what, you know.
Do we have to vote on it and say no?
Um, but there is no, we, it, I guess it didn't qualify as a capital request, cause it was, it was under two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and all he, he didn't really, you know, he was sort of vague in his request, was, but, uh, and I would think, Nick, we don't have to vote on anything, right?
You were voting on everything that was presented, so.
But he didn't, he didn't even have one of the capital planning requests in there, he just had a letter. Yeah, I know that, but, um. Um, yeah, and lightly, cause he didn't ask for, he actually didn't ask for a dollar amount that exceeded capital planning, so, um, we'll just proceed with trying to find him another vehicle and, uh, and try to get his other requests, if we can, into the budget. And last but not least, police. Does the board have any thoughts? On the, uh, the two cruiser?
I'd like to take a look at them and see, uh, Dan, you say, are those any good at all? The two cruisers that you're taking in, or? I mean, could someone use one of them in another department?
I, I think the Crown Vic. The Crown Vic might be able to repurpose that. The, although that has more patrol miles, it's used for patrol and, and involved in pursuits and things. Whereas the Taurus is ten years old, and it's got the ninety-four thousand on it, but those are kind of gentle miles. That's back and forth to court, to meetings, and into the drug lab and things like that, the state police lab. That doesn't have the hard miles that a cruiser would have, and it wouldn't have all those idling hours either, so, I, I think they could both be repurposed.
But you said the Taurus has no trade-in value?
Basically, both of them.
Okay, yeah, that's true, yeah.
Uh, the Taurus, absolutely not, and I'll five-eight laugh at me if I went down there, and like I said, we got pretty good dough for some of the ones that were auctioned, but we'd probably get a grant for that at auction, that's.
Yeah?
And.
Especially if your friend comes up from, uh, down the street there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Know about the other one, yeah.
I haven't seen that repurposed.
I haven't either.
Uh, yeah, the Crown Vic, like I said, they gave me four hundred dollars for an O eight this year. They, they may laugh at me if I bring another O eight down there.
I mean, they'll pass inspection and everything.
Yes, yeah, oh, yeah, we maintain them.
Yeah, yeah. You change oil and all that.
Absolutely, every three of those, the, the, one of the benefits of the newer Cruze is it has smart technology where we don't have to change it every three.
Well, yeah.
We can wait, I think they've been going even like seven, longer.
Yeah.
Where I just have to keep an eye on tire rotation.
So what you gave us here, a maintenance record, you do that on every vehicle?
Every vehicle is a maintenance record, whenever there's a repair, I go in and enter it into the database, inspection stickers, oil changes, anything, anything that's done to that vehicle, even warranty, uh, repairs go into that database.
So I guess one of the points, and I think you're sort of, I don't know if you're sort of leaning towards it, is maybe the Taurus, we could repurpose for the building inspector. You know, we'd be taking out a service there, and it's not really worth anything in trade, it'd be worth something to the town instead of, you know, buying, too bad you don't have a pickup, but anyways.
I was thinking that, could I?
The only pickup's the fire department, and by the time we're done, somebody's gonna want a million dollars for it, cause everybody wants it, so. But, um.
I don't know what application Dan needs to use that vehicle, if it's just.
I assume it's just inspections.
Around towns, at different construction sites, I, it would be more than adequate for that.
Could I come up there and take a look at those, uh?
Absolutely.
At your convenience with you?
I'll be there, uh, Friday and Saturday, anytime you want to come up. Friday may be a little harder to get ahold of Pat's car, depending upon what he has for court business.
Oh, now I know which one you're talking about, that's been fixed too, right?
Two thousand, two thousand dollars worth of transmission.
Oh, I was thinking, didn't he sort of meet a pole or something, six or seven months ago?
Don't remember that right now. It must've been a midnight auto body repair or something, uh, no, no, that was car six.
Oh, okay.
And a kiss the pole, crease the door.
I remember, I remember going up to a function up in Holyoke, and I thought the hood was gonna fly up, but that's, that's, that's starting for another day.
I can't speak, it's driving habits.
Sort of had a little.
I can tell you, I do wear my seatbelt if I'm riding.
You're riding the back.
I'm for you guys in, uh, through the chair, uh, since I asked on the, the other people who were talking about a car, how did you go about choosing the type of car that you chose?
We have been using Fords, uh, one reason for that is, we have Ford, Denfield Ford, those are warranty service, it's fairly close, it's closer than the Dodge dealer. Pretty much the chief's preference for Fords, we've used Fords for a long time, way back in the eighties, we tried Chevys, we tried Dodges, got a lot of bad feedback about the Dodge Chargers, and, uh, Chevys are small, you know, it's just.
So the, it, the interceptor, what is?
It's their badge name for either what would be the civilian equivalent of an Explorer, or, or the Taurus sedan. But they badge them as police interceptors, you know, obviously, they have heavy-duty alternators, different type of equipment to make it stand up to the rigors of police work.
I know, I know they're better, they're, they're better built nowadays, but I remember back in the day when former Chief Wallace told me, he pointed to the police and, or police interceptor on the back of that burgundy one, and he says, you know what this means? It means you get six miles to the gallon, so.
Our, uh, we have the large Expedition, that's probably about ten miles a gallon.
Yeah, but you need that for, if you're gonna have to go out in the woods or something specific.
If there's an emergency off-road and during the storm, one of the beneficial things that I've found with these new Cruze is they're all-wheel drive, both the sedan and the SUV, and we're saving on snow tires, we actually don't have to buy snow tires, the, the tires with the all-wheel drive. So there's some savings there, I anticipated having to buy tires and we didn't.
Yeah.
They went like chimps through the cell, but it's good to have that four-wheel drive in.
Oh, yeah, cause the old, those old Crown Vics were hideous in the snow.
We put tire chains on and you just, you know, it didn't work.
I got a nice Hummer for the police station. Oh, my. Plenty of room.
Yeah, what's that get for a gallon? About six, twelve or fourteen, yeah.
We couldn't see the red town seal on the, on the orange side of the doors, so.
But why ask you about those Cruze's, Dan, I got that, my, my Hummer's a two thousand and three. I mean, I, yeah, I take care of it, change the oil and everything and, you know, it's still in shape, you know? That's why it's one of if we could use those.
I, I think they could be repurposed. My biggest concern with the Taurus is, like I said, I, in my own personal opinion, it should have never been bought for that application. Standard practice for transporting prisoners is you put them in a car with a cage. It's unsafe to be transporting a prisoner, eve- in the front or the back seat of that Taurus. Either way, it's just not good for one guy to be in, it's just not standard police procedure, yeah, it's just unsafe.
Okay, any further questions or anything? So it doesn't sound like we're opposed to the idea. I know, especially if we can repurpose at least one or two of the other vehicles. So in light of that, I'd like to make a motion to, um, to approve the capital request by the police department.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I would really like to explore possibly going down to the one vehicle replacement, but that's certainly a conversation that could be taken place. Uh, I'm liaising with the chief, so.
Once I look at them, maybe I can come back and give you some feedback.
That would be great, because, because we could, like, um, uh, Mr. Quimby said, we could, it's, we can pull as opposed to trying to add it on and I think there's definitely, I agree, there's definitely a need and we want them, you to be safe.
I think once we get rid of what is basically a, a seven-year-old vehicle model year and a ten-year model year, we're in a pretty good rotation. Right now I have two twelves, two thirteen, excuse me, two thirteens, two fourteens and two fifteens. Detective Barone's car, I had the oil change on it, uh, the other day, it's only got about thirty-six thousand miles on it, I think it's an eleven. So again, that one doesn't pile up the miles.
Right.
So playing into the capital planning, that one is going to last probably ten years.
Okay.
So, and once we get through these two, we may be able to go.
Maybe go down to one or maybe zero.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, newer vehicles probably last longer because, just because of technology. Okay.
I mean, all those miles, we're only four miles across these long metal, right?
Yeah, just.
Is that a sign that the, the police are out there doing their job that day?
I, I would hope so. I would hope so.
If you're putting four miles on a knife, that's not a good sign.
As a supervisor, I'm concerned.
I mean, because when you sit in the island mile, or island town, I think it a lot of miles.
No, they're out doing directed patrols and they're watching parking lots and running radar and those are, you know, if you're sitting in a parking lot or you're sitting somewhere running radar, you're, you're piling up those.
One thing I'd like to ask you, Dan, how, how come they take out a new car when you're doing road duty? You know, because you know how a lot of cops are getting hit now and some compared to taking, why isn't the old Cruiser taken out to those places instead of a brand new one?
The one that you might have seen, officer, more within the rotary today is basically one of our oldest vehicles, that's a thirteen.
Yeah.
That, that car four is one of the two original Interceptor sedans when they started, stopped making the Crown Vic.
Do you have a requirement out there for Zebra on, if, if you're going to do road duty, that take the older car and let, let the patrolmen that's doing a terrific job?
As the principal day watch supervisor, I look at the job and see if a Cruiser is necessary. I don't just say, hey, take one, take one. Most of the time, an officer has his own private vehicle.
Yeah.
But if it's in a hazardous location, a hill or some spot, obviously the rotary, then I make an assessment of if a Cruiser is needed. I assign them a particular Cruiser. I've been kind of using that one because it hasn't been getting a lot of use now that the guys like the SUVs. The other thing is that when we have a detail like that, we bill the contractor, whatever the vendor is.
Yeah.
We, uh, bill them a fifty-dollar flat rate for use of the Cruiser, so there's some
Compensation back, yeah.
Cooperation to monetary, you know, of money for the town for the use of gas or whatever.
That's why I say that, I'd rather have someone smashing at the old Cruiser rather than the one, you know?
Yeah.
Because, you know, on road duties, sometimes it's tough.
Yeah, all right, um, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, uh, Friday or Saturday. Just give me a call and I'll be there during the day.
Would it be okay if I go with you guys or?
Huh?
I'd like to see them also.
Yeah.
If that's all right.
Yeah, Friday might be a little touchy with, uh, trying to get a hold of Pat's car if he has a prisoner or something or.
Oh.
I see, yeah, he's using another car. I'll try to, if you let me know when you want to do it, I'll try to make those car available.
You let me know what type?
Well.
In the morning?
Saturday would be ideal, uh, probably I have three pistol permit applications Saturday morning, so sometime after ten.
All right, that'll be good.
Ten-thirty would be good. Family first.
All right.
All right, okay, thank you, thanks again. Thanks for your support, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we got, we got five done and one that we're going to come back to on the eighteenth.
Right.
Now, Nick, um, are both of the town council items executive? Or is the second one just choosing dates?
Uh, the second one is, uh, really just choosing dates.
Okay, do we have, uh?
I, I can.
Could you?
Chairman, uh, this was, uh, and it may not even, it may not even need the dates, but the thing is, um, there's an arbitration that the board's aware of, uh, relative. Anyway, Labor Council needed some dates looking ahead in April and.
April?
April, uh, fifteen, April or May.
Justice won't trip the law.
I, I gave, uh, Attorney Taylor some idea based on what I believe are some dates that the board's already indicated that he may or may not be around. Uh, or maybe quite busy, um, at that particular point in April. But, um, if there are any dates that the, what we need basically are three dates.
Okay.
And then again, later, uh, on in the day, if there's some back and forth going on, that it may not even come to pass, so. You know, I suggested that either the very first week of April or the very last week of April. Um, and then maybe even sometime in May, but.
Okay.
Are there dates to completely stay away from the, or, or dates that the board would prefer?
I'm going to jump in on this first.
May I also ask, are there particular days?
Or just you give me a timeframe?
What she, what her task is, she needs to go back to the, um, arbitration agency and give them three dates and make a pick.
So you're not looking for a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday, like just, okay, gotcha. Sorry.
Speaking personally.
Go ahead.
We got April fifteenth.
You got tax time.
And there's an election. And, you know, I, I assume I'm running again, but, um, you know, I may not be sitting here, so, but later in April is fine, you know, better for me. And then, yeah, late, and if you have to go into May, like the second week would be good, you know, second week down. Second week of May.
Yeah.
Late April, second week of May. That would be okay for me, but.
Okay.
Late April, second week of May.
I think I want to do it on the first week of April when their taxes do. I'm just kidding, but every, I, I, I could reach you. Yeah, whenever, no, I was just kidding.
Can't come in.
So whenever he says that's, that's fine, I'll make it work as long, how much of a notice will they be giving us? As long as they give us a couple of weeks, I can make it work.
I think that they would, I'm hoping that they have everything scheduled before the beginning of the new year.
Oh, then, yeah, I can make it work.
For some reason, they bounce something at us that we can't, for some reason, we can't do, then we can always switch it within those timeframes, okay?
So roughly late April, second week of May.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty, um, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive to set, executive session to discuss matters of non-union employee compensation.
Some more.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Select McGorman?
Yes.
Selectman Thorpe?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, to return to open only to adjourn. Let's amend that, so, uh, let me redo the whole thing. I'd make a motion to move into executive session to discuss matters of non, non-union employee compensation to return to open session only to adjourn.
Some more.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, uh, Selectman Gorman?
Yes.
Selectman Thorpe?
Yes.
Selectman Federius. I wasn't going to ask if there are.